Thank you for joining us this evening for the August first, twenty twenty three, Montesereno Regular City Council Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few helpful rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with the regular city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and unable to speak to the council. Only attendees using Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comments. Lastly, when we're not all in the same room, all votes in this meeting must be taken by roll call.
Thank you. I'd like to call the City of Monte Sereno City Council Meeting to order on Tuesday, April first at seven, August first, August first, at seven oh one P M. Maybe we have our pledge of allegiance. We've got scouts from troop two. Audience, please rise.
Color guard attention. Color guard advance. Color guard, prepare your poster colors, poster colors. Audience, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Please click your right hand over your heart. Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic of China as one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as a particle. Color guard, dismiss. Audience, I use.
Thank you very much. With that, maybe have a roll call, please.
Before we do roll call, I will have a council member, Alaki, could you state your reason for remote participation today? Councilmember Alaki, can you hear us? Can you hear us, councilmember Alaki? So I believe on due to some technical issues, we will be going to have help nerve or Alaki participate remotely in this meeting. So.
Can we not try to phone him? Is he reachable by telephone?
He's appearing remotely pursuant to the new legislation, and that requires that the participant be able to be heard and seen. So he needs to have both audio and visual.
But can we not use separate audio to have them?
He would have to, well.
Because we can see it.
Right. If there was another way, I guess.
Yeah, just phone. We've done that before. I can phone. Do you want to be able?
Okay.
Oh, there you are. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you now. I'm on my iPhone. I guess that works.
Okay, can you state your reason for participating in tonight's meeting?
Yeah, so I have a personal reason. I'm here to take care of my granddaughter. And I also confirm there's nobody over, nobody over the age of eighteen in this room. I'm here by myself.
No, under disposs, correct?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
So councilmember Turner, here. Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Alaki.
Present.
Vice Mayor Walshhammer.
Present.
And Mayor Meckler.
Present. We have a quorum. With that, we have orders of the day, and what I would like to do is I'd like to have item number one, under unfinished business, moved to the top of the agenda after our consent. But before the public hearing, I appreciate that there's a number of people that are here in chambers and online. So I would like to do that to make it easier for them. Is that acceptable, counsel?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. All right. So we'll change the orders of the day. There are no presentations that I'm aware. I will say that I had asked Pacific Gas Electric to make a presentation regarding the outages on July the fourth, July the seventeenth, and July the twentieth, but they were unable to do so at this meeting. Oral communications at this point in the agenda, any member of the audience can speak to up to three minutes on any item that is not on the agenda. So if the item's on the agenda, it'll come up. And if you are here in chambers, please approach the podium. If you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand.
I believe we should tell.
Good evening, mayor, city council. My name is Nick Shovedell. I live at eighteen forty five Wickie Road here in Monte Sereno. And I want to bring to your attention a growing issue versus six hundred of our residents. And you mentioned PG&E, but I want to give you some more specifics. On January the first, we had a sixteen hour outage. Then on January the tenth, we had a two and a half day power outage. On Thursday, the twenty, on Thursday, February the twenty first, we had another power outage. On Tuesday, March the fourteenth, we had a two day power outage. On Friday, March the seventeenth, we had another two hour power outage. On Tuesday, the twenty first of March, we were down again for a day. On Wednesday, the twenty third, we were again down for the entire day. And as you know, on July the fourth, the seventeenth, and the twentieth, we had power outages. So for six hundred of us, we can see neighbors who have power, but we have to move to hotel rooms. We have to purchase power generators. It's becoming increasingly frustrating for us to live like this. So we've reached out to PG&E, and surprisingly, the one person that we talked to said, you should petition the city to petition the county of Santa Clara, to petition the state of California to raise this issue of Pacific Gas and Electric, because there's two things they can do. There's a known legacy issue with the electricity connectivity here in Los Gatos to the main power grid. And two, we can request to prioritize our power lines being moved underground. So those are two fashionable things that we can do. So I'm here for, to ask for us to think about that and prioritize that, because it's getting increasingly impossible to live where we can't get power on a consistent basis. And this happens to a subset of our community. There's three thousand people in this city of Monte Sereno, but six hundred of us are in a unique grid. Our pocket having this issue. So that's what I want to bring to your attention. I'll pause there and see if there are any comments or questions.
You have three minutes to speak, and we can't take any action on the item. So I'll make a comment after you're done.
Okay. So my request is, would you consider petitioning the county of Santa Clara to petition the state of California to accelerate the remediation of these issues for us here in Monte Sereno? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We can't take, as I mentioned, we can't take action on this item. But I will share with you that I was in, I had email correspondence and also telephone conversations with people from PG&E. And I am doing my best to work with them to deal with this issue. And then we can bring it back at the end of the council meeting, have a discussion, put this on an agenda item at a future meeting. So you're the residents of Monte Sereno and I believe some of Los Gatos. We hear you. We feel your pain, and it's got to change. So. With that, oh. Former mayor Lucas, Lucas, would you like to come to the podium?
We're in oral communication.
Yes. Any item that is not on the agenda. I think you know the drill.
I'm still learning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member of the Council. My name is Jack Lucas. Yes, I'm former mayor, councilmember. The city of Monte Sereno is honored to serve this council by terms. And enjoyed every minute of it. I live at one seven one seven one Xena Avenue, Monte Sereno. And I think I have the only home in Monte Sereno where the numbers, the address numbers read the same way, frontwards and backwards. And they add up to seventeen. I'm also currently a member of the West Valley Mission Community College Board of Trustees. I represent trustee area number five, which includes all of Monte Sereno, Saratoga, half of Los Gatos, and some slivers in the West Valley. I'm currently a member of the Los Gatos Community Concert Association, and that's the hat I'm wearing tonight. I'm here on behalf of the board of directors of the Community Concert Association to thank the council. We're considering our application for some grant money to keep our association alive and well. We've been applying, we've been hosting community concerts for the district for seventy five years. This is our seventy six years. The support we've received from Monte Sereno dates back to, I think, the nineteen nineties. That dog normally turns as mayor. And I have got a great idea. They drafted me for the board because I had a key to the high school, the master key, and I could let the artist in. But anyway, I enjoy it now. I want to thank you on behalf of the board for your support. And what I would like to do is leave you with complimentary tickets for a concert. And I would also, Madam Turk, if you distribute these. And also, this is the valuation of a single ticket for your FPPC forms, Fair Political Practices Act. I thought it was pretty squeaky clean. I got caught once. And they bill me for my wife's dinner, and I wanted my appeal, but stay clean with the FPPC. Would you distribute these, please? There's a lot to do. And again, thank you very much for your support, your continued support. I hope we see you at the Los Gatos High School Auditorium. At least one free reason there for you and a guest and selected staff members. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mayor Lucas. Appreciate that.
Thank you for listening to me.
And are there any other members of the public here in chambers that would like to address counsel? If so, please come to the podium. If you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand. No hands raised, no one in the podium. I will close oral communications at this point in time. Do we have any written communications that have not been entered into the record?
Yeah, no new, I rate litigation.
No written communications. With that, we've got a consent calendar. Items one. Brew. Item. Mayor, sorry. Orders of the day. I was going to suggest that maybe we rearrange item on the calendar to benefit the folks who were going to apply for the community room so that they didn't have to sit through the. Oh, I, I thought we had already passed orders the day. You want to put them at the front of the? Yeah, I think that that would be nice to do so. Okay, so we'll deal with the tablet. So we'll, we'll move item. New business. Sorry, unfinished business, item two. Ahead of the item one, and then we'll go to the public hearing. Item one? Sure. Yeah, I agree. That's, that's fine with me. But I think we will do the consent calendar. Yes, do the consent calendar. Okay. All right. So we have items one through five on the consent calendar. Would any, any council member like to pull? Any item from the consent calendar?
I will.
What would you like to pull?
I'd like to pull out item number one. For the meetings in July eighteen, special meeting.
Okay, we can pull item one.
And I would also like to pull item number four.
Item one and item four. Okay, I would like to put those at the back of the meeting then. You can deal with those items at the end of the meeting. That's acceptable. With that, we've got items number one, sorry, we have items two, three, and five. If you are here in chambers and you'd like to make a comment on the consent calendar, items two, three, and five, please approach the podium. If you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand. I'll close public comment on the consent items two, three, and five. And with that, I would be giving a motion. I would like to move that we approve items two, three, and five on the consent calendar. Second done. We have a motion and a second. Maybe we have a roll call vote, please, since we've got one council member appearing remotely.
Councilmember Turner, yes. Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Alaki.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walshhammer.
Yes.
And Mayor Meckler.
Aye. Motion carries. With that, we are now on to item two of unfinished business. Consider a resolution expanding the membership of the Community Center Committee by two members, including the capital campaign for the community center project as a responsibility of the committee and appoint two residents of Monte Sereno to the Community Center Committee. Do we have a staff to part on this?
We do. So at the last meeting, special meeting held on July eighteen, the city council directed staff to with advertising for the newly created position to expand the community center committee and to also prepare a resolution clarifying the membership responsibilities of the community center. The scope of responsibility of the committee is to help guide and guide the project for design phase to completion. To date, the committee has recommended the final design of the community center on July eighteenth. The council also directed staff to include a managing, include managing the capital campaign for the community center project as a lead of the committee. So today, we're asking that you guys consider the three applicants that, and I think we're also included in the agenda of all three applicants and select two of the three.
All right. Thank you. I believe we've got applications from three people. Ms.
Just process wise, the resolution expanding the membership would need to be passed first before the selection of a new member.
Okay. With that, I would like to invite public comment on, first of all, do we have any questions of staff by council? Done. No. With that, if there's a member of the public here in chambers who would like to make a comment, please approach the podium. If you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand. No one here in chambers, no one appearing remotely. I will close public comment on this and bring it back to council to increase the number of members of the Community Center Committee from seven to nine.
In addition, you're also expanding the duties of the commission.
And thank you, and expanding the duties of the building, a community center committee.
I'll, I'll make a motion to do so.
I would like to do. We have a motion in the second. Maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Alaki.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, yes. Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walshhammer.
Yes.
Mayor Meckler.
Aye. Motion carried. Now with that, we have three applicants for two positions. And I'll start by saying I am so pleased that we've got people wanting to participate in the Community Center Committee. I think it's very telling that we're, we're getting involvement probably the, from the public. And I'm, I'm, we're going to have to make a difficult decision on this. And my comment would be, and my observation is that as the community center proceeds, the evolution of the Community Center Committee is changing. So we have approved the design, the committee and council approved the design. So that was a big part of the Community Center Committee involvement. And in the future, going into a capital campaign and also dealing with the policies relating to the community center, where the Community Center Committee would be a recommending body to city council. Having participation in that is very important, but, but some of the membership of the committee may change. As, as I that's my answer, observation. With that, we've got three applicants and I've got this Jane Ward. Are you in the audience today, tonight? Or appearing remotely? No? Another applicant, Ms. Former Mayor Lon Allen. Would you like to make any comments to council and perhaps we may ask you some questions?
You never turned out a non-profitary speaker. Lon Allen, I guess really two comments. Number one, I've been involved with the city a lot, both the S and A Commission and on the council. I'm particularly interested in involving the residents and raising money. And I've done a lot of that over the years. I've been board chair at the Old Apple, which involved capital raising. I've been board chair at Harper School, same thing. I've been board chair at KGH Public Publishing Channel fifty four and a dozen other boards. If you're on a nonprofit board, fundraising is always one of the major things you have to do. I think there's an opportunity to involve our residents to get them excited about the community center. And as I said, to do our combatant city work for the meeting, I will, from a quote, come by Chinas, ask people for money. Please answer any questions.
Any questions? No?
Thank you.
All right. We have Ms. Jennifer Crock appearing virtually. No? Okay. Well, with that, I guess one of the things to do is to take public comment at this point. If you're a member of the public here in chambers, please approach the podium. If you are appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand. No hands raised, no one approaching the podium. With that, bring it back to council. And we can have a discussion and we can have a vote. We've got three people that have been applied for two positions. And I I know that both Lon Allen and Jennifer Crock have been have shown quite a bit of interest and have been involved in this and have been watching their proceedings as we go forward. And I've, I've never met Ms. Ward before, but she is a longtime resident and I would be, if she wasn't selected, I would definitely be soliciting her involvement and participation throughout the remaining process as we go through. And if there would be a person that would resign from the committee, she would be, you know, I would ask whichever candidate doesn't, is not selected, I would invite them to join the committee and be appointed. So that said, other comments by council?
Question. How did we arrive at nine? Can we expand up to ten?
City Attorney Powell, could you respond to that?
So the direction of the last meeting, the way it was to expand it by two. The resolution that you just passed expanded it by two. If the council wanted to modify that to do three, they could. Question for all of you would be, is that too many people? Is it, will it be cumbersome if you have more? If it's a committee expanded, that, does that make it members? But it can be done if you would like to expand it.
Other questions, comment?
Questions, then? Would we have to go back and revisit the item that we just approved?
We could do that tonight.
We can do that tonight. Great. Well, I like Councilmember Turner's idea. And I think it'd be great to have ten members on the board, just especially this time of year. I know that it's hard to get nine people together so that ten person could make it a little bit easier to have a forum and and again, if somebody resigns, we'll automatically have our nine members and I don't think the board would miss this stuff.
Understood. So to clarify with council, with our attorney, a quorum of nine would be six.
Five.
Five, sorry, five, and a quorum of ten would be six. So we would increase the quorum. Okay. Question of order for attorney, can we go back and reopen that resolution made from nine to ten and then appoint three, or do we have to appoint two, increase by one and then go back to point one?
You could, you could go back to the resolution, the maker of the motion could make a new motion to increase it to three. And then you could then go to the appointment pass.
Perfect. Who was the maker, maker of the motion? Councilmember Alaki, if I recall.
Yeah, yeah, I made the motion. I, I am, you know, it's great to have ten people, but I'm just, I'm just thinking it may be too many people and maybe I'm willing to have such a large. Have such a larger. Audience, group of people running it, I mean, it's really impressive that so many people want to participate. In this product, in this project. And it'd be great to have ten people, but I'm, I'm just concerned about that, so I'd probably prefer to leave it at nine. And, and then maybe you can come back in a month or two and say, okay, we need another person on it. And I'd leave that to Mayor Mekachak since he's really. Very, very involved, I mean, this is going to be one of the greatest. Projects for Monastirino in quite a few years, once this community center gets built up. It'll be a highlight historical project, so. I would prefer to leave it at nine for now and then come back and maybe formally put it on another agenda and see if people are still interested.
City Manager Leon Artis.
Thank you, Mayor Mekachak, one alternative may be that you could appoint somebody as an alternate member. So you can have nine regular members and one alternate member.
City Attorney Powell.
Yes, you could do that, so your forum would be, would be five, because you have nine members, but you would have an alternate who could take the place of someone that was not available.
Yeah, I, I, I would go along with that, with that amendment to the motion to appoint one additional alternate member.
Any other comments by council? I'll second, because I was the second on the motion. So the motion is to increase by two and appoint an alternate. Is that correct?
Yes.
We have a motion in the second, maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Alahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolshimer?
Yes.
Mayor Mekachak.
Aye, motion carries. Now, we'll go back, we've got three applicants for. Two positions and an alternate position. Can I? Sure, I'll, I'll start us off, I'd like to nominate Lon Allen and Jennifer Crouch to be the full-time committee members and Jane Ward as the alternate.
I, I'll second that.
We have a motion in the second, so we could. If we have a roll call vote on this, then that would be the same as voting individually, so maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Alahi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolshimer?
Yes.
Mayor Mekachak.
Aye. Congratulations to our three new members being the two. And our alternate, thank you very much for. Your upcoming public service. On this important project, with that, the next item on the agenda is. Item number one under unfinished business. Which is housing element update, discuss sites to consider for SB ten rezoning for multifamily housing. And before, we have a staff report. I live within five hundred feet of one of the properties, so I will be recusing myself. You skipped over public hearings number one. You know, we, we've moved. We're moving that down. We're gonna move down. Yeah, we've got lots of people in the audience, that's what we discussed, yeah, under the orders of the day. Are we okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, I'm gonna recuse myself and step outside. And I would. Like Vice Mayor Wolshimer to. Take over.
You do. Oh.
Not even out of the ring.
So this item is housing element updates, discuss sites to consider for SB ten rezoning for multifamily housing. Let me talk about the process a little bit, for those of you who are not familiar with how we're going to do this. We're going to start with a staff report on the item. Then we'll bring it to the council and see if the council has any questions about staff report. Then we'll open it for public comments and. There will be people online, I'm sure, and there will be, there will be people in the audience, I'll try to alternate between the two. Each of you will get three minutes for your comments. I have to make clear that we cannot respond to any, any questions that you may have, we listen to your comments. And. Take it from there. After that, we'll bring it back to the council for council comments. And probably after that, we'll have a vote, it could be a roll call on the. So let's start with the staff report.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I am Diana Perkins, the city's planner. The city council adopted the sixth cycle Housing Element Update on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And it was submitted to the California Department of Housing and Community Development on February first for the review. Comments were received from HCD on March thirty-first requiring changes to the document. One of the main comments received was that the city needs to rezone to allow for multifamily housing in accordance with the California Government Code. The city council discussed this requirement at two meetings in July. And committed to rezoning a minimum of two sites to allow for multifamily housing under the SB ten zoning regulations. SB ten is a state law that was effective last year. And allows a local jurisdiction to rezone specific partful to allow up to ten residential units on a single lot. As part of this action, the local jurisdiction can set development standards for the specific parcel, such as building setbacks, size, height, and landscape requirements. That can all be determined uniquely to that property. And this may assist the council to mitigate any impacts of the multifamily development they have on neighboring properties. Staff has identified four sites that the council may want to consider for SB ten zoning. But the first two sites were identified as they are currently significantly underutilized sites with a significant and out of vacant area. The first site is one nine, one nine one Carl Avenue. It's an approximately ten acre parcel that is zone R one forty-four. It currently includes one house, an ADU, and a few accessory buildings. The lot, the lot is large enough to support additional housing units while maintaining the existing housing and buildings that are on the site. The second site is located at one six, one two one Rose Avenue. This is an approximately one point eight acre site that is zone R one eight. The site currently has one house and several accessory structures on it. Based on the current zoning, the property could be subdivided into up to ten single-family lots. And SB ten rezoning would allow the same number of units, but as multifamily units rather than single family. And the last two sites were identified at the direction of council provided in the July meetings. To focus on sites along Winchester Boulevard. These two parcels are addressed one five seven eight five Winchester Boulevard. And they front along the street, they are both large lots for the area. Each lot is over seventeen thousand square feet. And they are in the R one eight zoning district. Which allows for eight thousand square foot lots. Staff has sent a letter to each of the property owners of these four properties to inform them. Of this process and to make their interest in being considered for potential zoning. Staff recommends that the central direct staff should proceed with starting the potential zoning process at two or more. Of these identified parcels or other parcels that council may direct sites. The actual rezoning does need to be completed by January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And the housing element itself cannot be certified until specific sites have been identified. So this complete the staff report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question? If I may ask a question?
Sure. Councilmember Alahi, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for doing the hard work that you've done on this, I think this has been quite a, quite a challenging task. I, I was curious whether, and maybe. City attorney can answer that question best, is whether notice should also have been given? Or, or, or if, if it wasn't given to. Houses that are adjacent to the lots that, that, that have been identified for this zoning.
So tonight's meeting, the purpose is to identify sites for the city to consider, this is the first step in that process. And the next step would be to work on the development standards and have a public hearing, so at that time, property owners. Around the properties will be notified and invited to attend the public hearing.
So the decision we make today. Would not mean that these sites are going to be considered, it would be just mean that we're going to be considering to consider these sites in the future?
So no, tonight's decision would be directing staff to come back with the development criteria for these sites. As being designated for the SB ten, so this would be the first step in that, but the public would have an opportunity to, if they. Were not heard this evening, they would also have an opportunity to be heard at that public hearing where the development standards will be considered.
Right, but that hearing would only have to do with what the development standards would be, it would not have to do with. Whether these sites should or should not have been considered. And when it would be appropriate to let the neighbors also know that these sites are going to be considered and they might, because then they don't have a chance to say, no, this site should not be considered, do they?
They could at that hearing. Testify that they did not think those sites were appropriate, they would have that opportunity, and the council would have the opportunity to decide that those sites would not work. After hearing the public testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes, may, may I ask a more general question? Are we looking at full compliance here for HCD or substantial compliance?
So is, with this housing element submittal, the most recent version of the housing element was submitted on one week ago, last Tuesday, to HCD for their review. That document does have one placeholder in it. HCD is waiting for these two sites, specific sites to be identified before they'll be able to complete their review. We are hopeful that at the end of this sixty-day review, that we. That HCD will provide. A ready to certify letter, at the least, which could include. Criteria that the city has to complete in order to receive certification. So hopefully, at a minimum, we'll receive that this.
So are we going for full compliance or substantial compliance?
Well. We're going for compliance. They want to, HCD, you know, certainly gives up conditional compliance.
Because we don't, we shouldn't claim for substantial compliance, not necessarily for compliance, right?
So. My, my understanding is that that will be based on HCD's review of the document. If they feel that everything is in compliance. Then the information that we'll receive from them is a certification letter. If they find. We're. Almost there with just some specific changes that need to be made. Then they will issue a ready to certify letter based on those conditions. Otherwise, we will receive comments and have to go through a point thirty cycle.
Let me, may I ask one more question? For example, University Avenue is one point eight. Can I go to HCD, can we go to HCD and say, look, we've got almost two acres here? So we don't need two lots, we need one lot, two acres. Is that an option?
So under the SB ten provisions. You can rezone in one existing lot with up to ten units. So as the lot on Rose Avenue is one single lot. With using SB ten, it would be a maximum of, of ten units that could be zoned for. If the council does not want to use SB ten and wants to. Essentially create a new zoning district to allow more units on that property, that would be. A different process than the SB ten process, but that could be direction that council provides tonight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Craig?
For the property on Carl, would we be able to use Smith Creek Road for the? Traffic to go in and out of the development? If we were to choose that site?
That could certainly be a possibility that. We can look into in terms of. I'm not sure if that is a public street. Or a private street. But if, if the council did want to include that site tonight and you could certainly provide that direction, and we can. See if that would be feasible as part of the.
Okay, because that particular parcel, the area that would be used for any construction is. Pretty far below the rest of the. Structures and. You'd almost have to build a switchback to get out of there. And the best way to get out of that piece of property is going to be along Smith Creek Road. Okay, just wasn't sure.
May I ask one more?
Of course.
SB ten says that a property has to be half a mile from public transportation. And we're using SB ten for Rose and Carl. And they're not half a mile from public transportation, is that correct? So we wouldn't be in compliance with. The law, right, or the bill?
So SB ten has a, a couple of different criteria that are used to qualify sites for this legislation. One is a distance to high-quality transit. The. I'm sorry, transit-rich area, I think is how, how they determine it. And that does require a certain frequency of bus. Service at a stop. And there is not any, the, the bus stop on Winchester does not meet that service frequency. So we are not using the. Transit-rich area designation in order to use SB ten. There is three other criteria that can be used, and that would be in an urbanized area or an urban cluster. And the entire city of Monastirino is categorized as an urbanized area by the US Census. So that's the criteria that we need in order to use SB ten.
So can we push back and, and not use the other criteria, but the criteria that. It is not close to public transportation for any of the two lots?
So that the SB ten tool to allow possible rezoning is a choice that the council can make, it's not a mandate. So alternative. Rezoning options would be to create a new zoning district or to create a new overlay zoning district to allow for multifamily.
Any further question? I have one hypothetical question, let's say there's a property. And the owner wants to do an SB nine split. And, and that will result in two properties and can those two properties then be rezoned as SB ten?
I believe so, I don't believe in the SB ten legislation, there's any. Time limits to when a lot had to have been created to be used.
I think that's correct, I, I think it could, the question would be, are those parcels large enough to accommodate something like that?
Well, I think one of the parcels that we're talking about is definitely large enough. That's really why I was asking, thank you. Any further question?
One, one last question, if. If between now and the time that we actually try to. Perform the SB ten zoning, if a homeowner wanted to submit their property. For consideration, would they be able to do so? And how much time would you need to process? The valid, the, the validity of that particular property being compatible for SB ten rezoning?
So I may. Again, I'll ask the city attorney to step in if there's any additional information, but I believe if a property owner were interested in. Rezoning their property using the SB ten, they could certainly. You know, come to contact staff, they could certainly come to a council meeting. You know, come to contact staff, they could certainly come to a council meeting, and that would be at the council's position, whether staff would proceed um with that study.
Okay, and if a person was interested in having their property zoned with SB ten. Would there be any limitations on the property for any immediate plans that they had to upgrade their residence or anything?
So that could be part of um what the city council would approve um with an SB ten ordinance. So the council could decide um whether or not the underlying zoning district um could be still could still be applicable for development on the site. As well as SB ten, so providing two options um for the property, or if only the SB ten um. Requirements would be the only redevelopment option. So I think that that could be decided as part of the SB ten ordinance.
Okay, and then just to clarify what you said earlier, there are. You mentioned four criteria for a particular piece of property to be considered for SB ten. Any one of those four, the city council can choose what they're using for considering a piece of property, correct?
So in order to qualify for SB ten, um the property has to be in either a transit rich area or an urban infill site. Um, and we do not have um property in Montesino that qualifies as the transit rich area. But the entire city does qualify as an urban infill site.
Great, thank you.
That's no term.
Yeah, I I just wanted to to uh verify something here for residents. None of these these numbers that we're going to get from SB nine or SB ten will be part of our arena numbers, they're correct.
So that SB nine, um we do have ten units included in our um arena projections. That is reflective of the number of property owners who have expressed interest in completing a lot square under SB nine. If the rules are changed to increase the eight hundred square foot building size limit. Um, the SB ten properties we are not are not included in our arena projection. But if we do have units that aren't constructed over the next eight years, um under SB ten, the city would get credit for those units. As new house, new housing units towards our way.
I'll have to read that again because I don't think that that's quite accurate. I thought that SB ten numbers. Are not going to be part of the arena numbers, no matter what.
They're not part of our projection, the power we plan to achieve our arena requirements. But over the next eight years of this housing element um period, any new unit that is constructed. Is counted towards achieving our arena.
Any further question? Well, the council already allowed you, you got any, any time?
Yeah, I just I just wanted to clarify a question. I understand SB ten is not going to probably help with arena numbers. But that seems to be the thrust of what HCD and uh Senator Leonard want to do. They want to build. Supposedly affordable housing and they think if you build these SB ten units, there will be a path to affordable housing. So it's more of a. Philosophical objection by these guys, and that's why we want to put that in to help get that our HCD. Housing element approved. Would that be a fair comment? Did you hear me or no?
Yes, I I saw. Are you saying that the numbers, the units that are constructed um will not necessarily. Meet the goals of HCD to provide affordable housing?
No, I'm 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 saying is uh we may not be counting those units for now. But the idea of putting that in the housing element is more to satisfy the pushback that it's cities giving everybody when they don't have something included for multiple housing. And so it's more it's more to go to make it easier for for our housing element to go through.
That's correct. So it it's not being uh it's not required to meet the low income units. It's just required to meet the variety of housing types, which is another requirement.
Right, okay, thank you.
And any further questions? Is there anybody? No, I have to. Um, I think it's time for public comments. So the way I would like to do this is pick somebody from the audience who's attending today here. And then go to somebody who's attending online and then alternate until we're completed all the speakers. So. Um, let's go by row. Uh, unless anybody has other suggestions, please state your name. Uh, our city clerk will be the timekeeper. You all have three minutes.
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, with the council, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Kelly Westberg. I live at one five nine two seven Viewfield Road, just the street parallel to this one. I'm here to speak on my own behalf as well as I'm the the president of the Neighborhood Watch Association for Viewfield Road. There are about a half dozen neighbors who contacted me already to voice their objections to rezoning one six one two one Rose Avenue. We have a number of objections. I'll only mention a couple because there are other people in the audience who I'm sure will mention others. Uh, first objection is the traffic problem. So if you were to rezone one six one two one, it says in your report, you can rezone up to subdivided into ten units. Ten lots, each lot can have a main house, an ADU, and the SB nine unit. So we're talking about. Probably minimum four cars per lot, maybe many more cars per lot. You have teenage drivers, I'm sure. Uh, it could have anywhere from forty to maybe a hundred cars exiting every day several times a day. I don't know if any of you here know this, I'm sure you do because you work here, but members of the audience behind me will tell you. That trying to get out on Highway nine in the morning, evening uh is very difficult. Sometimes I have sat there for at least fifteen minutes waiting. Uh, significant problem. There's only two exit routes from this lot, one six one two one Rose, one is on Highway nine, the other is on North Santa Cruz Avenue. I'm I'm sure I'm sure that members of the council as well as members of the audience try to get out on the weekends onto North Santa Cruz Avenue. It is also very difficult. Those are the only two routes in and out to this lot. Another objection we have is safety in terms of burglaries. We have had, I don't know if you know, six burglaries on our street in two years, six, only twenty four homes on our street. If you put high density housing on one six one two one Rose Avenue, you will have many more people in this area. You may even have eventually a thoroughfare between Rose and Viewfield, which would bring more people on cul-de-sac, which is already pretty dangerous. We do not want to rezone one six one two one Rose Avenue for those two reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to somebody who's online.
Peter, can you hear us?
I can. Uh, my name is Peter Leave. I am uh also a resident and owner on Viewfield Road. I'd like to just echo what Kelly just mentioned and accentuate uh the points around traffic, notably Route nine. It should also be mentioned that for those of us who uh attended council meetings several years ago. The decision to transition the Jack Rose establishment to housing added more traffic on Route nine. So if the Rose Avenue consideration came to fruition, that would yet be again another. Situation in which Route nine would become even more packed. And we know what's going on throughout the summer, but it's become a year round problem. I I really want to highlight and accentuate Kelly's point related to safety. Um, the amount of burglaries, the amount of concern that has become very heightened and and very notable. Uh, would only in this case uh become more problematic. So. Um, just to echo Kelly's comments, I won't use my full duration in saying that uh we believe sixteen one two one. Rose would not be a good choice uh for this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, let's move on to the next. Good audience here.
Hi. Gary Nibbo, one six zero nine zero, Viewfield Road, Vice Mayor and Board. Do the people that own these properties right now know what you're trying to do? Do they know that you're trying to rezone their property? Have they been notified? Or is this just something you're going to drop on them in an eminent domain later and take it away? Well, we actually can't answer questions about this. Am I concerned?
Thank you. We may be able to answer your questions and the council comments later. Thank you. Don't raise hand. Former Mayor Allen.
Um. This is this morning's Mercury News, the headlines, danger signs return as wild buyer risk intensified. Um, as a retired lawyer, I accept the fact that if HCD wants multi-unit housing, we're going to have to give them multi-unit housing. But I think it's incumbent on the council to do it in a way that maximizes safety for existing residents. And safety for new residents. Having lived here for forty four years, if we have a a major fire, I think we all know that um. State Highway nine will be impassable because the eucalyptus are torches. Uh, and the safest way I would advise Serena will be Winchester. And uh if one goes uh north on Winchester to either seventeen through water or eighty five. One doesn't have to go through downtown Los Gatos. So I would strongly. From a safety point of view, I think Winchester, the sites are the safest. Also Winchester already has multi-unit houses. It has apartment houses, it has condominium, it has commercial things. So putting multi-unit houses there would not disrupt. If you will, the housing fabric for our community, for most Californians and maybe for most Americans. Uh, their single largest financial asset is their personal residence. So I think it's incumbent on us to try to. Meet the HCD requirement without doing things that would hurt the property values of our residents and uh. Multi-unit housing on Winchester, uh you can drive down, and I don't think anybody would know the difference between what it is right now. Uh, given all the necessary commercial activity and the condominium and everything else. So my strong uh recommendation is that we we pick the Winchester sites. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, anybody else in the audience here would like to? Oh, man, thank you.
Members of the council, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, uh, thank you for hearing us out. I'm George Blumenthal. I also live on Viewfield Road. I wanted to say that I agree with just what all the previous speakers have said. I just would like a couple of things, particularly with regard to issues of safety on Viewfield Road. This was a community in stress. As Kelly Westberg mentioned here at the beginning, um, there have been six burglaries within the last two years. As a result of that, the the members of the residents on the road have purchased a flock or not purchased rented. A flock camera to be placed at at uh at Highway nine to measure the um license plates and cars coming on to onto the street. We have banded together, we've tried to share advice about uh ways of making the neighborhood safer. We've even considered hiring a private security officer to help us to uh to ensure the safety of the street. This is a neighborhood in stress, and the stress of having additional housing on Rose Avenue, which will connect to Viewfield Road. Is when they will only increase the burden we currently feel. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm a resident on Viewfield Road approximately ten years, one five nine five oh. Uh, in uh my uh my current position as CEO of Calm or Drawer, I'm in the Building Products Business, I have been for thirty five years. I'm also the founder of a pinnacle bank, a local community bank here that we have in town. My concern is uh the major in uh ingress and egress. I mean, it's it's painfully obvious if you take a look at the uh. Satellite map on the property there, I think one of the owners who represents one six right here was referring to uh. Uh, since I am very familiar with development, uh the process of building and financing. I can look at that map and see in a heartbeat that you can get a thoroughfare from Viewfield through Rose. You talk about safety concerns. It's a high fire area. Uh, there's no egress here. Uh, you spam that uh that. That road between uh Viewfield and Rose, you essentially have one outlet, nine, the truth, all, I pretty much agree. It's become almost untenable. You can't get out on nine, you can't get in coming in. Uh, we basically have a two lane freeway going on there, and you have a center medium divider that everybody's rolling through. And uh average traffic one direction could be at a standstill, and someone's going sixty miles an hour using that medium divider. Last few years, traffic's obviously gotten very congested going through town. Uh, everybody talks about that plenty enough. Uh, the egress coming out of this potential lot over here on Rose is essentially Andrew's. So you're just dumping on North Santa Cruz, you're dumping on onto nine. And as was previously stated, Winchester is obviously the ideal spot for any of this type of development. And I realize the pressure the city's under to meet these uh these guidelines, but it has to be sensible and looking at the safety concerns, the ingress, the egress concerns. Uh, and what it obviously does to our local community here. I think everybody here is speaking on behalf of uh uh the local residents. That are only uh uh egress being on nine is is literally entitled. Weekend you're locked in your home, can't get out of here. You throw a fire on that road, some of us would have no way of getting out of here, especially if you start dumping onto Viewfield, um potentially spanning between uh Rose and Viewfield. Again, I got more time, so maybe I can tell a few jokes while I'm staying. I didn't think I'd get through that quite so quickly. But when uh when uh Deb and I came to Viewfield, uh it was because of the surrounding. It's a beautiful place. We love our town. We uh don't like the traffic problem, and we think all this is doing is adding to that. So the safety concerns and traffic concerns are definitely real. And I think everybody would be using some of that those comments. My final comment would be, since I do development and I do financing. I think the notice uh situation around here, I don't know what's going on, but we should receive some kind of notification that this was coming up. I heard about this word of mouth. I know you guys have a process for notification, but personally, I think it should have been noticed to the residents sooner that this was a potential situation. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Boy, is there anybody else?
Hello. I'm Allison Beidler. I know most of you. Um, I haven't been to meet you yet, Ellen. Maybe I'm going to come to your office hours and introduce myself more thoroughly. So um I agree with all of my um neighbors in the general area, their comments about safety egress and such. And um I would like to compliment the council on the great work and staff that you've done to get the housing element this far. Um, I I think it's really impressive how many of the ADUs were accepted towards our um moving in arena allocation. Um, I do have concerns about the lots proposed for multifamily, especially um in particular the Rose Avenue site. Um, as Ms. Perkins um discussed in the staff report, it's the only one in the high fire danger zone of the four. And I think that alone makes it just not an appropriate choice for high density um housing. Uh, Viewfield and Grandview are essentially a big U connected by a fire lane. And we already have existing problems with limited egress. Um, and a fire, uh Grandview's only way out is Highway nine, Viewfield the same, and then we're connected through that fire lane. Um, oh, with the winter storms, Highway nine closed multiple times. At one point near City Hall, I imagine you're all aware of this, um it was impassable for three or four days, I believe. Um, we had trees down basically every time it rained this summer or this winter. Um, so that that just makes it really unsafe. And then when the sun's out, the beach traffic starts, and that again locks up that um that road. So until we magically find some other way out of the city, I just don't think we can put the high density housing where it um further chokes Highway nine. And downtown. So I would um I would suggest that the Rose Avenue site just be taken out of consideration and we look at others more closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to? Please come forward.
Name? Hi, I'm Clayton Seidler. I live on Grandview. And I mostly just want to support what everyone else has said, but instead of being repetitive, there's one other thing that I was thinking about when looking at the. The topography of these four locations. So let's just imagine that this was fifty years ago or sixty years ago. If we're trying to choose a good spot for a community, the worst spot of those four is the one right next to a mountain range. And so what we have with the Rose property is the Rose property is the closest proximity to this mountain range. So it's really not a very practical spot to place more homes. I understand everything else with regards to the danger, the fire and the egress and exiting. But the the topography is the main, it is a very obvious factor. It's near a mountain range. And that is a barrier towards getting in and out. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. There anybody else? Would like to? The rest come on?
One more please.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you very much for hearing us tonight. I also live on Viewfield and I, we were the most recent burglary that happened. It's becoming a real problem. We have a lot of traffic on our street for people who don't live there. We've gotten pretty well educated on that now with the flock safety camera. So that's concerning. The traffic is a really big issue again. Mornings I leave about seven forty-five to eight thirty. You're nervous at that intersection trying to take a left. I know there's that middle lane, a lot of people pass. It's quite frightening sometimes. And what happens is we get car after car behind us and it becomes a stressful situation. Again, on the weekends, we all know that the problem is, we can't leave. If we're not done with our errands and back by eleven, we can pretty much forget. To leave. So the fire is obviously a problem. I don't know how we get out. Take a summer day with some beach traffic, start a fire. I don't know where we're all gonna go. So again, I just want to thank all my neighbors for showing up today and thanks for listening to us. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak? If not, is there anybody else online? So in that case, we will close public comments and bring it back to the council for comments. Who would like to start? Councilmember Delon, would you like to start?
Mark, we can hear you.
Yeah, sure. I'm really glad that the residents of Rose Avenue. Found out about this meeting and came to attend and give us their viewpoint. I mean, the idea on giving notices to neighbors. It shows why it's important because they will let us know about what things are really happening down there. I mean, looking at a map and saying, okay, this looks like an appropriate site is one thing. But you know, our staff is doing a wonderful job, but some of these other things are really critical. So my my thought is we can either go, we can go one of two ways, I suppose. Just from hearing from the Rose and Minefield neighbors, I would suggest we do not consider their property. As as part of the four package, the Winchester property, it sounds like those would be okay. But my my thought is whether we should put that back, come back and. Give notice to the neighbors of all the properties that we're trying to identify to come and let us know whether they have any serious issues with it or what their concerns are. And then once we've heard those concerns, we can decide whether those are what is not considering these properties or whether it doesn't really matter. So my my thought would be to, I don't know what the time requirements are as to how, you know, when you do rezoning, how much. Time you have to give all the neighbors. Is it ten days or twenty days or whatever and what the. How far out you have to do it, like is it five hundred feet or a thousand feet or whatever? But I would I would suggest we think about doing that, take the Rose property out of the equation. But on the other three properties, consider doing that. And then come back and have the council look into the viewpoints of the neighbors. Now, I don't know if that causes our city staff planner. Timing issues as to by when they have to get their report done and if it does, then maybe we can discuss this some more. Thank you.
So just wanted to make sure that we addressed the gentleman's question. I know that during the staff report, we mentioned that we sent letters to all of the owners, correct? And we did not hear back from from any of them, but we are going to continue outreach to these homeowners, correct? Okay, great. And and one thing that I hear whenever this discussion of. Trying to satisfy the housing element comes up and that's eminent domain. And I just want to assure from my point of view at least, there is no option with eminent domain. Okay, we are not taking anybody's property from them. The city is not in the business of seizing property to build homes. That's that's not what we're about. So I hope I can allay and I don't know if any of the other council members would like to make that same commitment. But I I just want to make sure that the word eminent domain is is just like that's. That's a non-starter for us.
So. I completely agree with that. You have my promise also. I will never support that. Thank you.
And yes.
And I was just gonna say, the purpose of the housing element is just to plan for housing. It is not, there is no obligation on the city to actually build houses. So there would be no reason for us to condemn property because we are only required to plan for that.
I understand that there have been questions and rumors. We wanted to address that. I think we did forcefully off.
I hope so. I just want to be, you know, totally upfront and say that no eminent domain is going to be occurring during this process. We wouldn't know what to do with the property. Yeah, so I don't have any other questions other than what is the next step in the procedure?
I think councilor.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make some comments here. So. And Diana correctly found wrong. HCD is demanding that we zone for multifamily housing, right? If we use that zoning to meet the arena demands, then we must zone for twenty units per acre. If we meet the arena demands without using multifamily housing, we must zone for it anyway, right? Or it can be at lower densities. Doesn't this just reinforce the need to do something with SB nine rather than SB ten? Furthermore, HCD is demanding that any multifamily units that are built must be rental units. Right? And none of them can be owner occupied. So if this is correct. I have a problem with HCD demanding that we tell someone that they cannot live in the house that they own. Or that they cannot set aside one of these units for their parents or children. I said at our last meeting that HCD's demands were arbitrary and I think they are. They're not only arbitrary, but they're absurd. So those are my points of view. However, we still need to meet a housing element. And that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from councilmember?
I do have something. I think everybody here knows. What the housing element is and what will happen if we do not. Have a certified housing element. Things will happen. And honestly, sort of caught in between a rock and a hard place. We're trying to meet the HCD requirements. On the other hand, I think we would all prefer to be honest to do nothing. So I think that's true for the residents also. So it's impossible for accountable to make everybody happy. I think whatever decision we make. Either HCD will be unhappy or some residents will be unhappy. But that's. That's life for a city council, I guess.
That's why you get the big bucks everywhere.
Exactly. So I don't know for a question. So in that case, I think we should proceed with the next step. And I need some advice from our council. I think we need to proceed with a vote.
Can I add one final question? I'm sorry, just because we'll probably ask this question later anyway. The parcels that are on Winchester Boulevard, they really need to be considered as a single parcel, correct? Because either one of them by itself would not really. Help us in getting our housing element certified, correct?
Correct. Individually, they aren't large enough to really make a difference.
So basically, there's three choices, Rose, Winchester and Carl. Okay. And now the fact that there's two owners that we have to deal with, would HCD look at that as a negative for that parcel? Do you think?
They might because it could be seen as more difficult. So the question would be, is it feasible for development to occur during the planning cycle? And that dual ownership could make it more difficult.
Okay. Well. Then I will just start things off and make a motion that we consider the parcels that are at Winchester and Carl Avenue. For SB ten consideration. And direct staff to move forward with that. Again, we are not doing any rezoning tonight, but that would be my motion.
Is it better if we split it up into two separate votes or should we vote on both and go or three?
You can vote on those two first and then depending on how that goes, that could be the end of it. If no action is taken on the Rose Avenue, then it would, that would no longer. Investigate that site because it wouldn't have been directed by us.
Maybe what we ought to do is have the different combinations in there so that they know what we're gonna vote for in the end, rather than vote for one and then throw it out. You know, so we can have Winchester and Winchester, Carl and Winchester, Rose and Carl.
Or you could do each. Yeah, you could do each parcel separately. So you do a motion as to Rose, a motion of Winchester and a motion as to Carl.
See.
And just for the sake of process, I would advise there's a motion on the floor. I would call for a second to see if there is one and if not. Proceed accordingly. So every time someone makes a motion call for a second.
And the motion is to vote on Winchester and proceed with the consideration. There's second one on?
I'll second it if you can take Carl out of there and just stick with Winchester.
Well, we said we needed two parcels, correct?
Yes.
So we really need to, we need to plug two variables in there.
I thought the attorney said that the two Winchester, kind of this two parcels.
No. It would be, it would be one. It would need to be seen as one parcel in order to actually be developed.
And owners of those parcels, I think rezoning parcels to SB ten is really a gift for the owners. I mean, they're the ones who jump at it to do it. So I don't know if that would really be a serious issue with the owners themselves because they'll be happy to. Put ten units on there. It's the neighbors that I'm concerned about. That haven't really received notice and they may come in, but since this is only a consider to consider motion, you know, I'm okay with that.
So you're okay seconding or consideration of Carl Avenue and Winchester Boulevard?
No, Carl Avenue, I don't, I don't want to be considered as part of it. I think Winchester is already an area where multiple housing can be built without really messing up the city of Montessorio.
So if there is, if there is not a second, then that motion would fail.
I can second it.
You can?
I will second that one.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Lahey?
No.
Councilmember Turner?
No.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer?
Yes. And the motion failed. We vote on individual property.
Okay, I make a motion that we vote on Carl Avenue.
There is second for voting on Carl Avenue? I will second that motion. Tell me your roll call.
Councilmember Turner?
No.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Lahey?
Nope.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer?
Yes.
I make a motion that we vote on Rose Avenue.
There is second. There is more second.
Okay, then I make a motion that we consider the.
Okay, we're considering both parcels on Winchester right now with that motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Lahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
What are we voting on? Winchester and Winchester?
So the nod was a yeah?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer?
Yes.
Can vote and carries.
All right. So I think there's, as a result of this vote, there will be more work to do for our staff to find. Another property because we need two properties.
Yeah, that may or may not be necessary. I mean, HCD I think wants us to at least say we're doing multiple housing. And they may be satisfied by us, you know, saying that we're going to do it on two parcels. I mean, because hopefully our arena numbers are going to be satisfied with everything else you've done, including the AD unit. So if we are, may not be necessary, I think you could probably move forward and if they come back and say you need more parcels, then I guess you look at it at that time.
So I think this is where what I brought up earlier in terms of are we going to be a full compliance? Or are we going to be substantial compliance? So here we have a way in which we can push back from HCD. We don't accept what HCD says, we can always push back. And if you look at the other cities that are, that they're doing, is there all, there are many of them are pushing back. So we need to push back and we need to say this is what our residents have come up with. This is what they've agreed to.
Excellent. All right. I guess you could call Mayor Becketschek back in town.
Any further comments from council? I think we staff knows what to do. To be continued. So. Let's vote for this item. I think we can safely bring Mayor MacArthur back.
Thank you. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, guys.
I'm sorry. I was just trying to think. So I wasn't trying to stop anybody. I'm sorry. No, you're doing great.
Yeah, good, good job, Vice Vice Mayor on running that meeting.
Yeah, that was good. We'll do it again.
All right. So we've finished, we, you, council, finished item number one. And we are back to public hearing number one. Consider objections to the twenty twenty-three We Debated Program Assessment Report and Adopt Resolution. In the report and authorize a collection of the assessment charges. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, I do. So on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two, the City of Monastorino Council passed a resolution the thirty-eight seventy-one declaring hazard agitation a public nuisance providing for their abatement and studying February twenty-first uh twenty twenty-three as a public hearing date for the annual program. The county mailed property owners a notice of the February twenty-first, February three public hearing of Monastorino uh along with the guidelines of the Monastorino we have in the program. Since the time the city has now completed um the actual abatement on those properties, completed the actual abatement on these properties that did not comply with the order uh to abate the nuisance. A report has been prepared summarizing the work completed and the cost um incurred. Now that the work has been completed, pursuant to the Monastorino Municipal Code, section eight point zero two point one one zero, the city council needs to consider the report. Hear any objections or raised affected by property owners and accept the report. The affected property owners have the right to raise objections and the city council may modify the proposed assessments if it deemed it reasonable and necessary, after which time the report and assessment list shall be confirmed. It confirmed the amount of the cost of abating the nuisance on lots in this property. And this report shall uh constitute to special assessments against the respective lots and shall be a lien against such property until paid. So in the report, there is a list of the properties. And we actually have someone here from the program. Um, are you available for questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you have any other questions.
All right, um. Let's just see if I understand this correctly. Um. We have received a report, we've got a uh an inspector here that is willing to answer any questions uh that we have. Uh, do the uh owners that are listed here, do they speak, may they raise, okay? And have we received any written objections from them?
None.
No. All right, uh, well, with that, and when do I take public comment on this?
With a public hearing, so if, if there are any questions, then you can open a public hearing.
Okay, but we'll have a report first. If there's any question.
The report and it's for you guys to consider. And also adopt the resolution, sorry, confirming the report and also authorizing the collection of the assessment charges.
Right, so I'll we'll have council ask questions, see if there's any questions uh under your report. And then we'll open public comment.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, ask for if there's any objections, ask if there's any public comment. Bring it back to council. All right, um, are there any questions of our inspector? None, for me.
Yeah, I, I, I had a, I just had a quick question. I noticed that most of the charges are like ninety-two dollars. Is that a minimum assessment that's done? Uh, and then one of it is six eleven, maybe if you can let, let us know a little bit more as to why that one uh is so high.
So every property is charged a ninety-two dollar inspection fee? Whether they pass or fail, that just since we're a cost recovery program that covers our time to drive out here, our gas, all the paperwork we have to do when we make the report and all of our mapping, and then also sending out letters to the property owner. And that one property that got the six hundred and eleven dollars, they got the ninety-two dollar inspection fee and then also the five hundred and nineteen dollar failure fee. So that covers us processing our admin fee, which is, so we found that property out of compliance. That did not meet the minimum standards, so we had to be charged the five hundred and nineteen dollar fee. And the owner was notified by mail with a courtesy notice. Then they had two weeks to abate the property and then our contractor went out after those two weeks and they found that the property owner was then in compliance, so they didn't receive any additional fees.
And so, so the inspection fee that's done, uh, does somebody report those properties to say that there's a weird problem? And then you go out and inspect, or how do you choose those properties?
So either, since we already have a list every year of about twenty-two hundred properties, while we're going from property to property, you might see there's a neighboring property on our route that's not in compliance. So we take pictures of the properties and we send the property owner an ad letter. And then in about January or December, each city will go through a, another public hearing and decide whether it's added on to our program. We may also get a service request either by email or by phone of someone's neighboring property.
Thank you.
Councilmember Craig? Yeah, and once they're on the list, I forget how many years are they on?
Three consecutive years.
Three consecutive years.
So it could have two years of compliance. And the third year, whatever reason we find them out of compliance, and that three-year cycle starts over.
Okay. And in the past, I've heard that some folks just like your pricing and just tell you to go ahead and do it.
It's sometimes cheaper, sometimes only a few hundred dollars more. So they can every January or February, we send out a return reply form. And then lets us know whether the property owner is going to abate their own property or they're going to have us do it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No, well. But I think we're, we're good. Thank you very much. No more questions. Uh, with that, I'd like to open it up for public comments at this point in time. If you're appearing. It's public hearing. So as a public hearing, uh, I'll open a public comment on this, is that correct?
We're technically just opening the public hearing and people that want to come and speak are invited to come forward.
Okay, I'm opening the public hearing and if anyone would like to come forward and speak, please do so and raise your virtual hand.
There are no hands raised.
I will now close the public hearing. Thank you. Uh, any comments by council members? I'd like to move that we accept the we debate that we want.
I'm seconding that.
And adopt.
And adopt.
The resolution confirming the we debate and report and assessment list filed by the county fire mar- marshal and remaining the same to set fire marshal to be entered on the tax assessment.
So.
I think not too.
We have a motion and a second, maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Lahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer?
Yes.
Mayor Becketschek?
I. With that, we, I believe, are on to uh committee commission reports.
I, I think you have, you have a couple of consent calendar items that were.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Consent item number one. And then number one. Number one, approve the minutes of the July eighteenth special city council meeting. Uh. Any comments on that? No.
Yeah.
I, I have.
I thi- I think I know what is item was pulled, and I'd like to ask council if it's really necessary to do that. Because I was in other meetings where uh commissioners or, or members were not present and they don't necessarily not have to vote.
Is that why it was?
Oh, because I wanted to say for that.
So um, that's true, you can um, you can still vote to approve the minutes from a council meeting that you didn't attend so long as the other council members can attest that it's an accurate reflection of what occurred. So for future reference.
So how will it be reported then? That I, that I agreed to argue what?
Yes, that you approved the minutes.
It's difficult to approve something if it wasn't here.
So you, what you would do is you rely, you're relying on the other council members to attest that is, it is uh true, accurate to what occurred at the meeting. So you can, you can do it that way, you're not required to, but you can.
So may I ask a question? In, in, in that, in that regard, when we have council meetings, can we put the videos as part of the, as part of the attachment? When we release the, the actual minutes of the meeting?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Okay. Uh, I've had people call me many times and, and have asked for, why is the, the video of the meeting not there? When we have approved the meeting itself? So can we have a video of the meeting attached to the agenda? So that this question doesn't come up. What, what are, what did you vote on? How did you vote on this, this issue?
Typically, I do wait twenty-four hours to over, usually like tonight, after tonight, I can't upload it, it won't allow me to. So when I come in the next day, I proceed with uploading it.
The video is attached to the agenda.
By the time you, by the time you received your agendas with the minutes, you should be able to go to our website and click on the video. And I know you've addressed, you know, one or two um that was already uploaded to our YouTube. And I accidentally forgot to connect because I connect, I upload it from the Zoom account and it automatically goes onto your YouTube channel, but I also have to connect it to our um website. So it is uploaded on the end right after the meeting, so I always have to, I have to cross list.
Okay.
But yes, typically twenty-four hours is when someone should be, less than twenty-four hours is when someone should be able to see the video uploaded.
I, I, I guess, uh, if I may comment, uh, what council member is asking is that a link be provided with the minutes. So you, you, so you know where to go, otherwise you have to go spend time on, on YouTube figuring it out. So when you do the minutes, if you could just provide the link to where the previous minute agenda is, that might be helpful.
I can do that, if that's a preference. So then, in the moment of um presenting the agenda, that this is going, the minutes are going to be, you know, to be approved, you want me to send also an attachment of the link connected to? So typically, that's already, um, well, yeah, I can, I can take care of that. I know.
And then you can make it a short link, you know, like a short URL, so it's, it's not like a twenty-letter link.
Make sure that it just says click here for last.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, sure, whatever minutes you're referring to, just agenda, that would be, I think that's a good idea.
I will take care of that.
I know that we put minutes of the July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three special city council meeting.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Um. Actually, I think I'm going to take public comment on this. I will open this for public comment. If you're appearing virtually or you're in council chambers, please approach the podium or raise your virtual hand.
My hands are raised.
I'll close public comment on this, and we've got a motion and a second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Turner?
Are we voting on item one?
Yes, yes. Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Lahi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer?
Yes.
And Mayor Becketschek?
I, motion carries. With that, we've got item number four, consideration to approve and authorize the city manager to next execute a contract with Metropolitan Planning Group, M Group, for staff support of the housing element preparation and implementation of programs not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. We have a staff report on this.
Yes, thank you. Um, M Group has provided additional staffing resources for the city for the revisions that were made to the most recent update of the housing element. Um, these services were provided by M Group, um, I'm sorry, that have been provided by M Group to date um were at a total amount um which was under the city manager's um approval authority. Staff anticipates um that changes will be required to the current housing element before certification is received. We hope that those are changes that can be completed within the current sixty-day review and not require a fourth submittal. Um, but staff um also anticipates additional support services may be needed for implementation of some of the housing element programs over the next few years, including the um SB ten rezonings. The professional services agreement before you tonight is on an as-needed basis, meaning that any assistance that may be needed from the consultant will only be called upon if necessary. Um, staff envisions that the agreement would be in place for the next several years as the housing element programs, um various programs are implemented. There is no minimum to this contract amount, so if assistance um is determined um to not be needed from M Group, there would not be any expenditures um in accordance with this agreement. And that concludes the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I have a few questions because I don't think I'm, I'm up to date with this. Um, how much have we budgeted for the preparation of the housing element and how much have we already spent? I think the last time I saw this number, it was over a hundred sixty thousand for this effort. Is that correct?
It is over one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, yes.
Okay, um. I thought we had all of this covered with the EMC group, so are we, are we uh getting the M group to do what the EMC group is doing and therefore not going with EMC anymore? Is that what this is all about?
So it is not um a duplication of efforts by the two consultants. Um, M Group was assisting in um the areas of this last revision where EMC was not um assisted. We told EMC that we would um work on that in-house and used um M Group services to augment the staffing um needs in order to get, I would say about two-thirds of the revisions made to the housing element under the current version.
Okay, so is, is the primary purpose now of the M group to negotiate with HCB?
Um. We have had one meeting with HCD that M Group um participated in. I think the main contact for HCD will remain the city staff. But um we can certainly use the services of M Group and their experience in gaining certification of housing elements for um other local jurisdictions to address any comments that HCD um may provide to us.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? No, uh, I will open this for public comments. If you are appearing during chambers, please, any wish to speak, please approach the podium. If you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand. I'll close, and no one is approaching the podium, I'll close public comments on this item and bring it back to council. I would like to make a motion that we accept item five on the consent calendar.
I'm seconding that motion.
You mean item four?
Four, thank you, sorry. We have a motion and a second, maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, um, Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Lahi?
I.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer?
Yeah.
And Mayor Becketschek?
I, motion carried. With that, I believe we have concluded uh the consent items, and we can now move to uh committee commission reports. Councilmember Craig, nothing to report. Councilmember Lahi?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Turner?
I do have something to report. I attended the um, the cert uh event this afternoon from five to six thirty. And they have a new NICP that is spay of the yard. Um, it is at the Jewish Community Center. And the um communications that they have, the GRMS radio, as well as the ham radio are top of the line. The guy who actually put this all together is a senior engineer at Apple Computers, and he's done an excellent job. The um the shed itself is uh, they have, it has solar, it has also car batteries. So we don't need to put in uh electricity or wire it in for electricity. Um. Los Gatos is putting in four new NICPs. They have eighteen today, and by the end of the year, they wouldn't have eighteen plus four. Uh, so uh, I, one of the things that I asked them is, are you going to upgrade? Uh, so, uh, I, one of the things that I asked them is, are you going to upgrade the Dave's Avenue to have the state of the yard, uh, NICP? And they said probably. So I think that's one thing we should look at. Thank you.
You, uh, Vice Mayor Wolsheimer.
My, uh, meeting with, uh, Silicon Valley Animal Control was canceled. There were only consent items on the agenda. So nothing to report.
Thank you. Um, it seems to be the month of July is when everything gets canceled. The VTA, uh, policy advisory committee was canceled. Um, and I did, uh, meet with the, um, the risk oversight committee of Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Uh, there's nothing to report there. Um, and there's an upcoming meeting of SVC on the fourteenth of August. Um, and the West Valley Mayor's managers meetings were canceled in both July and August. Uh, Mayor Matt Mahan is having another meeting of the West Valley Mayors, or sorry, of the Santa Clara uh, county mayors in October of twenty twenty-three. Uh, that concludes my report. So with that, um, we have council member comments, uh, and you'd make brief announcements or reports on your activities. No comment.
No comment.
Uh, I, I, I would just suggest that the issue on the PG&E, maybe you consider it for a future agenda item to see what can be done. I mean, the, their, their issues with their power outages. There are al- also issues with them not supplying power to new houses that are being built. I think I've, and some people complain that, uh, it takes forever to get hookups, uh, when they're rebuilding their property. So maybe we're, uh, looking at that more closely.
Thank you. Um, city managers report.
Thank you, mayor. In the, um, strategic goals that we did on April first, one of the goals was a team building exercise and I've been going back and forth with Kevin Duke and who would be our choice to lead that exercise. And I, um, wanted to try to line something up in August, but it's, uh, our agenda is building up pretty quick in the month of August, as you can see this evening. Where we are for our first meeting. So I'm thinking September fifth or September nineteenth, uh, council meeting to schedule this team building exercise and probably would start four or five in the evening. It'd be a couple of hours prior to our regular council meeting, um, maybe dinner in between. And, um, the Kevin Dugan wanted to reach out to each council member individually and talk to you prior to the meeting. So I just wanted to give you all a heads up on that and see what your preference was. An alternative would be to try to schedule a special time for it. But we've had a lot of special meetings lately. So I thought perhaps we can, you know, pick one of the regular council meeting nights and, um, do it prior and maybe keep the regular agenda light. Start, like I said, at four or five PM, have dinner and then have a council meeting beginning at seven. So I just wanted to check your feelings on that. Get it all done here. Um, or you can, uh, just shoot me an email and let me know your thoughts and, um, um, I'll, I'll, Mr. Dugan, and he will be reaching out to each one of you individually to discuss your, um, ideas for the, for the meeting.
Yeah, I commensized with my shirt class. Okay, on the fifth and the nineteenth or September nineteenth.
I will just, just one, one moment. If, do we have a council meeting scheduled? I think it's the sixth.
Was canceled.
The fifth is canceled.
Okay, so it would be the sixth or the nineteenth.
The sixth, what day of the week is that?
The word might have busted too long. September?
September sixth, yes.
It would be Wednesday, but that would fall on Tuesday.
Okay.
Is there a site architectural commission meeting on the sixth?
Yes.
Okay.
At seven, at, at seven.
I've got a question.
Just hold, hold on for a second. We're trying to do the scheduling in. So we, let's not try to do the scheduling now then. Okay, you've got a question?
Yeah. Can I ask it now?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, this, this team building meeting, is this council, is this council and staff? Is this council, staff and committee? What is?
It's essentially for council members. It's actually a very productive. I had attended it along, uh, with council member Mekachuk and council member Alahi last fall and I felt like it was kind of best practices and, um, a lot of other things, um, for council members, here takes council members that, um, will really help. What you, you know, one of our other strategic goals was, um, making council meetings shorter. I don't, I think it'll help us become more productive as a group and, um, I think you would actually, the, the group would benefit from it considerably. There's a lot that you may not think of on a day-to-day basis, but it's, um, it's a very good, um, exercise, I think, for any council to go through. It's not directed at us specifically as like we have issues or anything like that.
Steve, we can chat. Um, there's a new program that I'm going to be using for checking folks' availability for a meeting. Um, cause I have to do that for once that's coming up. Um, so we can also consider that our attorney is not available on Wednesday. Maybe we want to do Wednesday. So we can, some days and send it to them and then we can, you know, based off, uh, their selection, we should be able to know, get notified, which is the day that we'll have a quorum for that.
Well, certainly. I think it's important to get the buy-in from all five council members for this particular item. And all five in person as well as, um, we have to, of course, line up the consultant and then he wanted to reach out to the council members individually as well and speak with them prior to the engagement. So it's, it's a lot of coordination. Been working on this for several months now and, uh, just wanted to give you all, you know, kind of an overview of the process here this evening. But we can, as the mayor suggested offline, decide the, and, and as the clerk suggested, uh, try to come up with a date in the future. Perhaps it'll roll into October based on what the vice mayor mentioned of his availability. But we want to all be available for it.
And then I believe Tom or Alahi, that is him.
Yeah, I just had a comment. I think the city manager and others, that's a great thing that you're moving forward. Uh, and I think it's so great that we should get other parties involved like the SNA. Uh, should also attend. I think, you know, uh, it was great because I attended that and I know it was well worth it. And also some key members of your staff. I mean, obviously you're going to be there and the city clerk should be there. A council, the city council should be there and other states members that you think are appropriate. And since, uh, our city clerk has this great program where she can get calendars checked by everybody. It might be easier for her to send it out to fifteen people to see who is available on what day than pick up a bunch of choices. So we can leave the calendaring to that, but I would, I would suggest we expand the time period because if you're going to have somebody who's an expert like, uh, you're proposing, it'd be well worth it for others to benefit from that.
Mr. Leonards, comment?
Um, thank you for your comments, council member Alahi. I will speak with the consultant on, you know, who he thinks is best to attend. Um, my initial thoughts were it is really geared, geared toward council and it's one of those kind of open forums. And, um, I'm not certain if it's best for all staff. Certainly I will be there, but all staff to be included. And I'm also not certain about commissioners at this time, although I would probably recommend that council, we do have to pay money for it. So it's not free, of course, but I would recommend that if council saw merit in the session that perhaps, uh, we could line it up for commissioners later if, if they saw that, that is being evaluated. But I think initially the purpose is, you know, the council team building and that was the purpose of the strategic goal as well. And, um, good ideas, but we'll have to see how that unfolds.
Thank you. That concludes your report.
Yes, thank you. Or in the city picnic, of course, August twenty-seventh. Please turn in your responses. The postcards are in the mail. We're looking forward to every citizen of Montesereno who is available Sunday, August twenty-seventh from eleven-thirty to two PM to join our city picnic. We're going to have a great taco. Uh, I guess we'd call it tent or bar and we're going to have a barbecue. We're going to have face painting. We're going to have our agency partners uh, from all of our organizations, including, of course, our police department. They might do with a drone demonstration this year. So we have a lot of good things for our annual picnic. Please come. Please RSVP to our city clerk. She's keeping it us. Thank you.
Run about August twenty-seven.
Elvis, I don't know.
I think he might be born.
Maybe perhaps at Christmas.
All right. I know, I think they'll take us out of the court even. Um, future agenda items. Um, I'll start off with the, with what I think is a very important one. Um, I would like to see on the August fifteenth agenda, uh, a staff report in how to move forward with a concealed carry permit uh, in the city of Monte Sereno. Uh, the city attorney and I met with the chief of police and, uh, one of the captains that is in charge of this and the town of Los Gatos is moving ahead uh, with a permitting system and it includes both policy and it includes, uh, technology and they, I believe, are having a first reading tonight. Uh, and they're gonna, um, have another, uh, reading of it of their ordinance on eight thirty-one. So we would be coming in right behind them. Um, so I'd like to see that on the agenda so that we're, we're moving along uh, in parallel to manage the cost of, of policing for the city of Monte Sereno. Uh, and then as well, um, I'd like to see if, uh, there'd be a way, and this is, I guess, maybe a request for the city manager. We can have a discussion on this, uh, but to have people from the city of Monte Sereno attend what's called Leadership Los Gatos. And I'll speak with you about that separately, Mr. Leonards. So those are, that's my one future agenda item. Other comments from council? No, future gen items? No. Uh, and then I guess that's covers the future agenda items. Is there anything else other council members or staff would like to say? No, with that, I will adjourn the meeting of August the first, uh, at nine oh three PM.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.